And we're going to do the invocation in moment of silence for Mr. Genitis.
An awful lot going on in the world right now this past week, but there are two things that I'd love to, two topics I'd like to comment on. First, over this past weekend, I heard almost nothing in the events of December 7th, 1941. The Pearl Harbor bomb helped us into World War II. I'd like to thank all of our veterans from our greatest generation who gave their lives and those who survived who served in World War II. A moment please. And then the second thing, I would not presume to speak on behalf of the entire board, however, I believe we all would like to wish you a season's greeting and best for the holiday season. But I'd like to take it one step further and wish you all a very merry and blessed Christmas.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. In event of fire or emergency, there are two emergency exits. One is directly to the back of the chambers. One is off to my left downstairs into the parking lot. Ms. Zuluki, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mr. Warwer?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Chairman Serrard?
Present. We now have board guests, JFK Students Community Project.
Is there a preference to which mic we use?
Either.
Okay, we should be all set. Okay. Let me turn it on.
How are we?
Okay, I think we're good to go. Hi, thank you for having us. I'd like to first introduce everybody who is around me here from JFK. I am Sarah Collins, the interim principal at JFK Middle School right now. On the side of me is Jack Cole Giovanni and Karina Filippa. And behind me are Sandwich Heart, Alex Kravitz, Devon Markot, Brett Reedy, Cameron LeBlank, Brendan DeBarber, and Owen Lawler. In September, we lost one of our fellow classmates, Nico Filipe, sorry, Filippa, to a traffic accident. Couple weeks after the accident, these boys approached me and they said, "Mrs. Collins, we want to do something to remember Nico. We want to do something that will involve the whole school, that we can have some fun, but also do something positive and to remember him in a really good, positive way." So we talked a lot about it after school, and they came up with this great idea after we collaborated called Take a Lap for Nico. For a $2 donation, you would get a sticker and you would be able to take part in our event, which happened on November 4th. On November 4th, we had over 300 students, parents, staff, and community members who came out to take a lap for Nico. That meant you either took your bike with your helmet on and rode around the school, or you took a walk around the school with all of those people. It was amazing to see everybody participating. And our bikers, there were about 12 of them, as all of the walkers walked by at the end, they high-fived them. So it was really quite cool to see. It was a memorable event in that it had been really created in Nico's spirit. It was a good time to have a bit of fun with friends. It was something to give back and also to be part of our larger community. Jack and Karina both have some words they want to share with you right now.
Jack?
Hi, my name is Jack Cole Giovanni. This year, we lost our fellow bike rider and friend, Nico Filippa. Nico's passing was very sad. It could have been any one of us. After we talked as a group, we brought the idea of selling stickers to Mrs. Collins. She loved it. After multiple meetings, we came up with the Take a Lap for Nico event. We did this because Nico was our friend, and we shared our love to ride bikes. The Lap for Nico was a big success. We raised over $900. We feel very accomplished by doing this. We would like to make the Take a Lap for Nico an annual event to remember our friend Nico Filippa and his love to ride bikes.
Hey, Karina?
Hello, my name is Karina Filippa. My brother is Nico Filippa. My brother tragically passed away almost three months ago. I miss him very much. When I heard what these eight friends of Nico had planned to remember my brother, I immediately thought this was a great idea. While spending time with Nico's friends, they made me feel comfortable and a part of this project. This project touched and inspired many people, not just from Enfield, but as far away as Italy, where my family is from. I'm assuming most of you in this room have a driver's license. I am asking you to drive responsibly, not distracted or under the influence, and pay attention to bikers and pedestrians, as it takes just one second to change many lives forever. Thank you for your time. Again, my name is Karina Filippa, and Nico Filippa is my brother.
Okay, Alex, Brendan, you guys are up. We wanted to give each of you a sticker so you can be part of what we did. And you can do with it what you want, but you get to have a sticker. We also would like to thank a few people that we need to thank for their help. The JFK staff, the JFK students, and parents of everyone that helped us out here for their support. The sticker donation by the Reedies, Officer Maruzak, and the Enfield Police Department for their assistance with logistics. And also thanks to the Filippas for giving us the okay to do this and also for their understanding. Lastly, I have to give a final thanks for my end, for my crew that's up here with me, because without their creativity and wanting to do something for a friend, this wouldn't have happened. Cam, Brett, Alex, Brendan, Karina, Sam, Jack, Devon, and Owen are shining stars at JFK, and they are very, very special students to me and kids. Thanks for having us.
As, every now and again, you find something that's very inspirational, and the dedication that these kids had to remembering their friends should be, makes me proud to be a part of this town. Next on the agenda is the Enfield Teachers, excuse me, the Enfield Transitional Learning Academy recognition.
Thank you. My name's AJ O'Brien, and I'm the Physical Education Health Department Chair for the past 18 years. And eight years ago, we started the ETLA program, which is designed to meet the individual needs of the students from the ages of 18 to 21 with disabilities that have completed their academic requirements in the high school district here. I want to say thank you to the Board of Ed for having us, Dr. Schuman, the Cabinet, Cindy Stam, who's over at Pupil Services, who's been supportive over the years. The ETLA program, as I said, is in its eighth year and has won an outstanding program from the Connecticut Association of Health Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance. And ETLA is one of a kind in the state. We're here to honor five individuals tonight, two of which are not here, but I have a little blurb for those that are here and a plaque that we will share with them at the end. And we were able, about five years ago, to honor seven or five other individuals, mostly from Springfield College. And you have in front of you a handout that talks about the program, talks about the sports disabilities class that we do, our schedule, and kind of what we're about. So there's two packets. The first recipient tonight is Christine Catterden over on my far right. Last year, she was the Senior Food Service Director for ARMAC at Springfield College. This past fall, she was promoted to the Northeast District Manager. We met last fall, and I was trying to get a special price for our students and the staff to eat at Chaney Hall, the dining hall on campus after we did our activities. It's an ideal setting to socialize and to get a great meal. As I convinced her that we are a program that she should take a second look at, she asked what more she could do. And we came up the idea of a culinary class. So each semester, we meet with her chefs, and we do two culinary classes. We do pizza and dessert making, and this ties in nicely with some of the work jobs that our students do out in the Enfield community, such as working at the Country Diner and at Danny's Pizza. So it fits in with the long-term goals that we're trying to achieve. We have 16 students, and then on any given day, eight or so additional staff. And we've, through her help and persistence, we've saved the district close to $2,500 each year. And it just couldn't have taken place without her help. The students come to visit, and they love the socializing there. There's a photo of there. They love the staff. Each year, they give them plants at the holiday time. Christine made sure when she moved on to her regional directorship that these culinary classes would continue throughout the year. So thank you, Christine Catterden, for all your help.
I almost feel like I should put your name on the plaque, because I feel like we get more out of it than we give. But it's been a tremendous program on our end, and appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. Bridget Halpin, we'll go through that quickly. She's not here right now, but she is a professor of physical education, and part of the article that you have was done a couple of years back from the Triangle Alumni Magazine from Springfield College. She's in her fourth year teaching a sports disabilities class. She is a favorite of our students, and we meet with her classes roughly eight times a semester. This fall, we had the opportunity, and were invited to work with her three graduate students who are in the master's program for adaptive PE, and they've led her classes this fall. This coming spring, we will be locked in again for the sports disabilities class, doing anything from volleyball to basketball to soccer to cooperative games. So I appreciate Bridget Halpin's efforts over the past four years. The next woman who's not here tonight is Professor Kristen Malady. She is also the head woman's lacrosse coach. Every year during Humanities Day, which is in early September, the entire school shuts down and does community service work for the greater Springfield area. And we had been going the first couple of years to East Campus, which is the Outdoor Ed Program and the Ropes Course in Springfield with the men's lacrosse team, and we have since joined with her women's lacrosse team. So it's been a great opportunity for our young women to work with her young women and to socialize and to see some role models. And because of the dining hall, you know, they've come over to our tables, they've met with the kids, they've made plans for this spring to come out to a lacrosse game. So they've developed friendships, and I appreciate her efforts for Kristen Malady. The next recipient here is Bridget Sullivan here to my right. She is the Health Tracks Executive Director on Weymouth Road here in Enfield. I approached her many years ago to see if we can give our students an experience and exposure to an athletic recreation facility so that one day they may choose to join and be a member, not necessarily at Health Tracks, but at some kind of facility. So we visit in early January before Springfield College comes back from their break, and she is able to give us a couple of Thursdays, spend time with us doing a number of cooperative games, basketball, and volleyball. By spending time with the Health Tracks, our ETLA students are thinking about making healthy choices and making an active lifestyle when they are on their own or in group settings down the road. So Bridget, thank you for all your support. And last but not least, in the middle here is Carl Barnes. He's the manager of Bradley Bowl in Windsor Locks, and ETLA visits there twice a year, usually during the holiday time, and then often with other groups, such as the Vernon Group and the Windsor Group. And it kind of lends itself for a great festive, social event. Carl has often, has given us a very generous fixed price for the past eight years, and I won't say it here on the air, because he'll be hounded to match that price, but he's given us an unbelievable fixed price for two frames and for the use of the bowling shoes, and he's kept this price locked in every year. And it makes it very affordable for our group. We also go to Bradley Bowl at the end of the year and bring the Enfield High or the Fermi High students that will transition into the ETLA program for that next fall. Carl comes down and greets all of the students and makes them feel very welcome and special. I try to promote the lifelong physical activities for the ETLA students, and Carl has embraced the ETLA mission and its students. Thank you, Carl. So at this time, I'd like to give these recipients their plaque, and I'll just read from the plaque. So this plaque here is presented to Christine Catterton, and it reads, "Presented to Christine Catterton in recognition of your outstanding support and dedication to the Enfield Transition Learning Academy and Springfield College Partnership for Physical Education, Health, and Wellness, and your continuous development of spirit, mind, and body. ETLA and Enfield Board of Education, December 10, 2013." Thank you. Next is presented to Bridget Sullivan, "In recognition of your outstanding support and dedication to the Enfield Transition Learning Academy and the Health Tracks Partnership for Physical Education, Health, and Wellness, and for your continuous development of spirit, mind, and body. ETLA and Enfield Board of Education, December 10, 2013." Presented to Carl J. Barnes, "In recognition of your outstanding support and dedication to the Enfield Transition Learning Academy and the Bradley Bowl Partnership for Physical Education, Health, and Wellness, and your continuous development of spirit, mind, and body. ETLA and Enfield Board of Education, December 10, 2013." If you want to say anything, you're welcome to. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Serrard, if you would get a picture with our three recipients and AJ?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with our student representatives' report. There is some information in your packet, and both our representatives are here, so they will add to and comment on the things they sent us. I forgot where we started last time, so I think we'll start with Enfield High this night.
Okay, so this past weekend, our Model UN Club had our big conference that we do at Hartford College, and our economic resolution got passed after a few amendments, and it was a very nice weekend. We all met, and soon we're going to have our pizza lunch for Model UN. And this Friday and Saturday, we have our play called What a Life, and each day it begins at 6:30, and that should be really good. Everyone has been working really hard, especially this show week. And our NHS has put together canned food drives, so everyone has been going around during homeroom, and if you bring in a can, you get a ticket, and whoever donates the most cans, I think, wins a Visa gift card thing. So that's a good way to get everyone involved. And we are doing Penny Wars, which each grade wants to donate as many pennies or dollars as they can, and then they can sabotage the other grades with nickels and quarters and everything for different points. And that is a competitive thing, so everyone's very into that. And we have a hat day coming up, which is actually a Santa hat day, and you can wear Santa attire, and then at lunch, you can have a picture with Santa, which is also a dollar, and that's a fundraiser that we're doing. And yeah, that's it.
I hope everyone had fun at the torchlight parade on Sunday, even if it was particularly cold. As always, Fermi was represented by our marching band, and they played many a Christmas song to get everyone in the spirit. This Thursday, the 12th, at 6:30 in the auditorium, Fermi's winter instrumental, it'll be a Fermi's Winter Instrumental Concert. Come and enjoy performances by our string ensemble, our string orchestra, our three jazz ensembles, and the concert and marching band. Next Monday, during school, the Student Senate will be hosting the annual blood drive. Any eligible seniors are encouraged to support the cause and donate blood. The first indoor track meet is also the same day, so unfortunately, I will not be donating any blood. And finally, once again, on Saturday, the 24th, the 21st, the Friends of Rachel Club will be once again hosting a Day of Kindness around Enfield, which starts with a pancake breakfast from 8 to 11 at St. Patrick's Church. And participants are welcome to donate food or money that will support the Enfield Food Shelf, the Lowes &amp; Fish's Soup Kitchen, and Little Sisters of the Poor. And I hope everyone has a great holiday season and enjoys their extra-long vacation this year.
Moving along, Mr. Brass and I have got some information we'd like to share with the board. He's going to get this up on the screen here in a moment. And so while he does that, let me build quickly on Katie's last comment. The Board of Education has approved a long vacation for all of its students and faculty, which will begin on Friday, December 20th. That will be the last day of school, and the students and faculty will be returning on Thursday, January 2nd. So they'll be off for an extended period of time. There are also a couple of special Board of Education meetings scheduled. In your packet, there was a typo. It says November 17th for this meeting. It is really December 17th. And so that will be one of the meetings. It'll be 6:30 right here in this chamber. And then on Saturday, January 11th, at 8:30 a.m. in the conference room over at the Barnard School, the board will be meeting with Mr. Mooney and having a special workshop. And we are in the process right now of working with Mr. Mooney on the agenda for that, and hope to have it finalized and out to you folks relatively soon. The superintendent's book club, this is something we started last year. We studied a book together. We have decided on a book this year. It was very close. We let the faculty vote. It was within one or two votes of the book that they wanted to study. They have chosen a book by Douglas Moff called Teach Like a Champion. It's a very interesting book. It also comes with a CD with some topics and things that teachers can use in the classroom. So we're going to start the kickoff for the book discussion is this Thursday, and we'll be meeting four times throughout the early spring, talking about the book, discussing the contents, and putting those things into practice, and teachers will be coming back. So that's going to be, you know, we look forward to that. It's a great discussion every time we get a chance to get together and meet and talk about it. The, what you're going to see up here on the screen, last week when the board began its, or actually, continued its discussion on the future use of the Enrico Fermi Building, several questions were brought up. And last night, Chairman Serrard and I went to the Mayor's Advisory Council, and he did a fine job explaining to the public how the process would work and what the board's responsibilities were. And he did say that this was going to be a very public process, and it was going to be a very data-driven process. And you had asked many questions last time when we met. During the time since we've met, I've asked Mr. Brass to put together a digital forum as a collecting place for all of the information that you're going to be working with. For tonight, you're going to see a lot of different options. What we would like to have happen is for you to look at it tonight, not make a whole lot of decisions, but perhaps the board would like to consider establishing a temporary standing committee, which could work with us and decide exactly what pieces of this we want to use. Mr. Brass is a technology expert, and he's given, give you lots of options that could be used. And so we're going to walk you through what we're calling the Triple F, the Future Fermi Forum. And we'll bring it up here. It's accessible from our webpage. If you look at our webpage right there, you can see where the link is. Anyone can get to it. It is live right now. And when you bring it up, you come to the first page, and I'll walk you through a couple of the tabs, and then Mr. Brass will walk you through the remainder of them. You come up to the homepage, and the homepage is a location where the board or a message from the board or the chair can explain exactly what the process is and why this discussion is taking place, and frame it very much the way that Chairman Serrard did last night for the public, so everyone understands what the board's responsibility is and what you're trying to accomplish through this process. We also included a link to all of our schools, just in case someone wanted to go back out and make comparisons and think about things, because this discussion will include a lot of our different schools. Then we have news and alerts, a location for us to be able to put places and news and things that happen and interesting or important information. And then we have the key documents page. And what we have done over the last couple of days is located as many of the key documents related to this process as we could. Under reports and presentations, we have the GM Squared Consolidation Study, the hundred-and-some-odd pages of that. It'll take a little bit of time to load if you do click on it, but it will load. You'll get the entire report. Some of the members asked about the loan repayment obligations. We have all those listed there for each of the buildings, and it shows the amortization of the loans that you took against those buildings and what's left on them. We have the Town Manager's Pre-Referendum presentation that he did prior to this whole thing going to referendum, and we have the Town Manager's High School Consolidation Savings Presentation that he gave. So those are all archived documents. They're there. If we decide more documents need to go in, we can place them there. Under Letters and Correspondence, we've gone back from the very first compliance review letter that the district received from the OCR. And then we followed it through with all the different correspondence that have taken place, notification letters that came back and forth, requests for extension of that time, the voluntary action plans, revisions to the action plans, follow-up notification letters, the ADA compliance report, the state response to the GM II report, and then the last few talk about the notification to the state that we were going to go to referendum based on the GM II report, the results of that referendum, when we notified them of what we're going to do, and then their response to us in terms of the fact when we told them that our plan was to consolidate the high schools, and to, at that point, we did not indicate to them that Fermi High would no longer be used. In fact, we kind of indicated to them that Fermi High School's use as a school would not continue after that, so that we could get out from under needing to make those necessary repairs. So the states and the Office of Civil Rights belief at this point is that you are not going to use that building for a school. If you choose to use it for a school, which you may, we just need to notify them as soon as you make that decision, because then we go back into having to work through that voluntary action plan and continuing to complete those steps to bring it up to meet the OCR codes. So those are all the documents. We'll add documents to it as documents get created, but it's a place for everyone to go back and see that history and read those original documents so you have that data in front of you. They're all in chronological order, too, so. Now, the last four pieces are the parts of the forum where you're going to be able to have an interactive digital discussion. And so I'm going to let Mr. Brass walk you through the sections on your voice, your input, the polling place, and the podcasts. So the pieces here are similar in nature. One of them is a blogging site for you, all right? And you will be able to
And you will be able to pick a topic, blog on an issue, any one of you. And I can set you all up with accounts right now. Mr. Sarard, you're set up with the account here. And you can simply type out a message, and then people can respond to your message post right on it. They can't create a new blog, but they can reply to your topic that you're bringing out for discussion. Also, you'll have full editing capabilities, too, that if somebody goes beyond what they should, you can go and just delete that post from them and all of that. All right? So it'll keep a history. It'll group everything for you on the right-hand side here by date. So all of your December blogs will come together, all your January blogs will all come together. And that is-- that's part there. And again, all of this is up to you. So you can say, we can keep it, or we can turn it off, and-- or we can blog. You can blog, but not solicit any response, too. So you'll have-- you don't have to wait for me to put something up onto the website. You'll have free rein over that. The next issue is-- now, we call that Your Voice, Your Input. Very simply, this is just a form that any person in Enfield can fill out and just give their name, their email address, and then they can send you a question. And what this will do for you is two things. One is it will send you an email and say, here's my question, here's my concern, here's what I want brought up. The other thing it will do is it'll take all of that data and put it into an Excel spreadsheet for us, so that later on, we can go search, and you can search up all the comments that were made along a certain issue. And you can-- we can go and tabulate any kind of data and results for that. So that will happen here through Contact Me. They don't have to have email access. They just have to have a way to get to a computer. So this can be done at the public library or whatever. The next place is called The Polling Place. And what I've done there, when you take a look at it, I've just given you a variety of choices that you can put out surveys. We don't need to pay somebody to go do this. We don't need to go to Survey Monkey or all of this here. And I've given you all the examples of something that could be a multiple-choice example here, a free text where they can just type in there. They can have a checkbox, and you can say to them, check your choice here. Free text box where they can write multiple lines there. The radio button, just what you would see when you're clicking on that there. And you can have multiple choices, too. So let's say you wanted them to have a choice between item A and C and say, you know, rank your choices, too. And we can do that as well. This is all protected by security, so it's not just one of these robots can't come into the site and go and fill out stuff and send it to us there. They have to enter in a security measure. And I found a really simple one. Have you ever gone on some of those sites where you can't even read the stupid letters? And this is all numbers, so it's very, very easy to read the digits. And then when they submit it, what will happen, again, this all information will be put into an Excel spreadsheet, and we'll go and collect all of that data for you, too. And the last one is-- well, I entitled it Podcasts, because-- actually, it's something I used to teach my students when I was teaching at Kennedy. It's if you wanted to take video and post it up on the web. This is the spot that we would put it in. It could be just-- you could record a message, and then that can be posted up there. So this could take either video, audio, or both. And people can go and they can subscribe to our pages here, so that they will automatically, as you go and you update a blog feed or a podcast feed or any information there, they will be sent an email that says, hey, this new posting was just put up on the Future Fermi Forum there. And it will notify them automatically.
Again, this is something for your consideration. We can use any or all parts of it. I know those key documents were things that you definitely wanted, and you had talked about wanting this to be interactive and data-driven. So this is a technological way of getting to that, and we'd just be looking for your guidance in terms of how you wanted to set it up and run it and those kinds of things.
It doesn't cost us any money. It's all part of our website.
We have it there.
One question. The repairs for the disability, American disabilities, whatever it was, yeah, whatever it is. Do we also have the costs associated with it at the time that we were-- or we were--
I did not find any documents on that. The only document I found was the four options given to the board by the GM Squared Report. And some of those began to talk about renovating. But they all talked about renovating the building. And in those renovations, it talked about addressing the ADA issues. In other words, you were always planning, it seems from reading those documents, to go well beyond just fixing the OCR problem. You were always looking at enhancing and bringing those buildings up to a different standard that you wanted. And it was, do we do both high schools? Do we do one or the other high school? And your ultimate decision was to do one high school, add on to it, and make that your high school. But you never really said, what's the bare minimum? Let's meet the requirement and get out of here. That was never one of the discussions that I could find in any of the documents that I was able to pull out of the files.
I've got a number of things here. First of all, when you get into the GM C Squared Report, if memory serves me right, that was a pretty flawed document, wasn't it? Very flawed. So be careful when you read information from that. A couple of things. One, you made a statement that we led the state, that we wouldn't be using Fermi as a school. My question is, who made that decision?
I believe when I asked you how you wanted me to respond to the state, you told me that, so that you did not have to continue to address the issues in the-- in your compliance report.
That we, as a board?
Yes. So the discussion was always along the lines that, in order for you not to have to move forward and do those repairs, we informed the state that you were going to close the building.
Just at the time, that we were going to be renovating it, that there was going to be future use for Fermi, but it hadn't been tried yet. Is that correct?
Right. They're under the impression that you are not going to use that as a school, so you're not following through and making those repairs for the next two years. If we tell them that you are, then we go back to the report that you filed with them, that Dr. Gallagher sent to them, and you have to begin to make those repairs.
Because there was a timeline, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
So it was kind of like we were going to cross that bridge when we got there? I remember vaguely now, because we were going to get the referendum pass for Enfield High, and then whatever was decided with Fermi, then we were going to deal with the ADA.
But as far as not using it, the only thing I can remember is that we weren't going to use it as a high school. Nothing or renovate it and bring it everything up to code, other than the fact that saying it was never going to be used as a school. I really don't ever remember that.
I think it did. And I think the-- seriously, I don't think it was-- you responded to them until after the referendum passed.
Correct.
Okay? It was after the referendum passed. We had to come up with a response to them. And one of them was financial. If we had not had that response, say, we weren't going to use it as a school, at least at this time, okay, we would have been still in the same timeframe to correct all of the ADA stuff. It didn't preclude us, and I think you let us know that, it did not preclude us from, at a later date, coming up and deciding to use it as a school facility. Then the clock would start ticking again.
That's correct. Guy brought up, in this whole system here, an editing ability. Now, what you're saying is, the chairman would have the ability to edit comments that are sent in?
If there was a comment that you wanted to delete because you crossed the line or whatever, and you just felt that the other person wasn't on topic, they would be able to delete the comment. They would be able to go in and edit it. They would be able to either keep the comment on the site or delete the comment completely.
I would think that that's something we should all be able to see, those comments that are possibly being deleted, rather than just having one person make that decision.
I can make sure that when somebody posts a comment, that it gets-- I don't want to inundate it, of that each one of you will receive an email of the comments that somebody's making, which is not a bad kind of editorial way for all of you to all of a sudden say, hey, wait a second here. Look at this comment here. We need to get this off the site right now. So if one of you picks it up, then you can make the call to me if you can't get a hold of Chairman Sarard.
Okay. Then what I would suggest is that-- is that we have it sent to all of us, and then if Tom so chooses where he thinks there's something that should be deleted, or some of us thinks something should be deleted, that we communicate. I mean, I think it's just a safe-- I'm not going to say a double-check, a nine-way check on certain things.
I think what Mr. Brass is suggesting and how I would take the editorial tool is if someone decided to use profane language, rather than keep the conversation specious with appropriate language. I think that would be the case where you would edit. I don't think if anybody issued an opinion on a topic, as long as it was to the-- at least closely to the topic, I don't think the editorial key would be hit. I think it would be when someone was going overboard. The last thing we want is to have this turn into Facebook.
Well, that's not quite the way I heard it. I mean, I understand what you just said, and that makes a tremendous amount of sense. But I still think-- I personally would like to see what is up for deletion and not deletion. I'd like to see all the comments, to be honest with you.
And you know what? You will, because even if Chairman Sarard deletes a comment, all of that data still is collected and will be put into an Excel spreadsheet regardless of it. And so even if it's removed from the site.
Well, that's the same as me not seeing it then. Okay. Do you guys understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. I don't have a-- I guess one question I have is, does-- if it comes on some-- let's just the example of profane language, which I think nobody disagrees with. We don't really want to see that on the site. Does it go on first and then gets sent out? So it's posted? If it's like that, you see something like that happening? Or if somebody makes personal attacks on anybody or whatever? I mean, does it get out there and then get deleted? Or does it happen prior to that?
You know, it's whatever you want, Mr. Nell. If you would like to have editorial access before anything gets posted, then that process can be set up as well. As somebody makes a comment, you will be notified. There's a comment that's been coming to the blog post that you made. Do you want to publish it or not publish it? You can do that.
Seems like a full-time job.
That would be my only caution about that, is that--
Tom's got plenty of time.
That it could be, so.
But the other question is, we have a standard here, where people can't talk about personalities. They can't use inappropriate language and so on, that we have right here in front of us. My assumption would be we'd use the same standard for this. And we certainly do not want to have some of the things that go on Facebook or on some blogs out there that would be out there representing this discussion. We want this to be a thorough discussion, a public discussion, but a responsible and reasonable discussion.
And I will keep track of it, too. So I'm going to keep my eyes on the site as well as-- but in case I miss something and you say, guy, there's something up there, and I think that we should at least take down temporarily, then we can put it back up, so.
I agree with Tim. Maybe just throwing a disclaimer up there, saying that the use of profanity, character, you know, et cetera, is not allowed, and your post can be--
That's a great suggestion.
It's good. I agree.
I still would like to-- okay, first of all, I'd like to see everything that's sent in. If Tom so chooses to make some sort of editorial correction to it or feels something should be deleted, it'd be very easy for him to just send something out to all of us. This one from Person A, I think we should either edit it this way, or it's my opinion it should be deleted. And then if any of us have any questions about it, you can get in contact with them right away.
It can't be edited. It's either on or off. It's either in--
Well, you just said it could be edited for language.
Stop, stop, stop.
Yeah, okay.
All right, stop. From what I understood, what Mr. Brass has just said, the choice is very simple. You either pull a post, or you allow it to exist. The board policy is that you do not attack personalities. You do not use profane language. If anyone uses profane language, you're going to get deleted. If anyone attacks an individual member of the Board of Education, you're going to be deleted. There's not a question here. And those are the cases where you will be edited. There will be no editing for content. If you have a personal opinion or an educated opinion or a formed opinion on something, and you present it in a professional manner, it will stand. The editing feature is not to censor anybody's opinion. It is to keep profane language off and personal attacks off of an official Board of Ed page.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification. I think using the word edit, as you just did, confuses the issue. I think if it has-- any of the things that you just said, I totally agree with it. It's deleted. Okay? Just for clarification purposes.
Now, once again, though, it's-- we're on a very fine line here, I think. When you're talking about an attack, an all-out attack against somebody sitting on this board is one thing. But knowing the population of this town and the way people write and speak and everything like that, they may have some harsh criticism for some of us. And I don't want to see that being construed as an attack on us. I mean, it's a fine line that we're approaching here.
And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Genitis, and I do not disagree with you. I will say this. The information that-- because this is a-- if we allow this to exist, because right now, again, we're not Facebook. We're the Board of Education. It's a Board of Education page. If you want to have a factual discussion, that's okay. It's no different than sitting here in a board meeting, because that's exactly how I'm going to be looking at this and how we should all look at this, is that this is a board meeting. This is a function of the Board of Education. It may be an electronic forum of it, but it is still a board meeting. And as a board meeting, there is a certain level of decorum that is anticipated and expected. And if it is not maintained, then it will be deleted. If someone comes out and starts attacking you personally, or your family personally, or any member here personally, it will be deleted. If you swear or use four-letter words or expletives, it will be deleted. That is not tolerated in a Board of Education meeting, and it will may not be tolerated on a Board of Education website, if we keep it. Again, this is not Facebook.
And you might want to just-- we can post your policy as your first message.
Absolutely. You can be very, very clear about it. You can articulate a position and an opinion without going to the lowest common denominator.
What I don't want to see is us ever being accused of any type of censorship of anybody's ideas. And the way people say it sometimes probably isn't the way we'd like to always hear it. That's what I'm trying to get across to you.
Mr. Chairman, if you just use the same standard that you'd use to any individual that went up to that mic, that that's the standard, that we've stopped things here before--
That is my anticipation, is that--
That's not stifling anybody's, you know--
No, it's not.
Ideas.
And I don't believe that it's stifling someone's ideas. I mean, you can be forceful in your opinion. We've had forceful opinions here in the past. We have stopped it when it became personal. We have stopped it when someone has dropped an expletive. It has happened in every town committee meeting that I've seen. It's happened in every town council meeting I've seen, and it's happened in pretty much every Board of Education meeting. That standard should be maintained on an official Board of Ed function. This may be an open forum, but it is nonetheless an electronic Board of Ed meeting, and that's exactly how you should treat it. And that should be the policy. Silencing someone's ideas is entirely different than assassinating someone's character, and that will not be tolerated.
I have two other things. When someone sends in a question to the board, will the general public get to see this question?
If it's a public forum, I'm assuming, yes.
Well, I think he's referring to the part where they can send an email to you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And right now, they send the email to you, so it doesn't get recorded anywhere and--
Then I guess you would be responsible for whomever it was addressed to. I mean, I have no problem with every board member having access to the page.
No, I'm not worried about that. What I would like to see is, if somebody sends in a legitimate question to us, that everybody gets to see it, because when one person asks a question, that can generate thought by somebody else around that particular question, so.
I can make sure that everybody receives the emails from there. I just didn't want to inundate you, but you can all get the emails.
And once again, you know, you clean it up, or something's deleted, or you get the general gist of the idea and maybe rephrase it or something. But I think it's important that the entire public that goes on this site is able to see what those questions are.
See, when it comes to electronic communications, if you want that to be public knowledge, then I would assume that you would put it on--
On the blog.
On the blog. If you wanted to address something, I mean, making an assumption that-- I mean, that would expose us all to a liability if someone sent us an email and we put it up on the Board of Education website. I mean, that's not our policy. I would not want to do that. I mean, if you wanted to summarize a question for a blog post, I don't see an issue with that. But putting somebody's email up, that's, you're crossing that.
Well, once again, you're in an area that I don't know anything about. Alls I want to, if somebody asks us a question, I think everybody should know what the question is. How you do it, I don't care.
We could always do it in an FAQ style. Frequently asked questions, and that would be part of the blogs.
Sure. And then, I have the last one. Okay, now, everything that you've just said is interesting, and it's done by the Internet. Will there be any other way or any other forum, similar to like these listen-and-learn meetings that the superintendents had, where we get together at an elementary school or some other school, and, or like the council, where they go around four times a year, except we would do it in whatever timeframe we needed, where people could literally come and listen, or listen and talk, and ask questions to us?
One of the ideas that was brought up during the Mayor's Advisory Council was to do just that, was to have a public speaking tour, much like when we did when we reorganized the school district. I think it's important that we have that level of public participation in it. I think it's important as a board to have that level of public participation in it. I've heard all of our concerns, I've heard the voters' concerns, when the topic was first discussed, and has continued to be discussed. And we made it a pledge when we took office that we would improve communication, and that, I think will be, I think this will be a good leap in the right direction for important board decisions.
Randy Daigle is here, and he might be able to correct me, but I think the estimated cost of fixing what we were, of the ADA in compliance, was about $2 to $2.5 million.
$2.5 million was a rough estimate for just Fermi.
For just Fermi. So that was a question.
That was just the ADA requirements that have been previously cited, not the ones that are now in today's code.
Right. So that was, at that time, it was about, at the time of the GM squared, I believe, it was about $2.5 million, and that was just an estimate. And then, if there's been changes in legislature or whatnot, and the policies are more stringent, then it could be even that much more plus inflation over the years, so.
I have a quick question about the blog. So, I know, I don't know how to put this. That's what Jen always said before she hit us with a... If we're, if somebody puts something on the blog, and I respond, and Peter responds, and then Vinnie, and then Tim, and say Lori or David, or, does that become a quorum? And in a sense, an illegal meeting?
That's an excellent question. I think we'd have to get Mr. Mills to help us with that. I don't know why you wouldn't be, because you're not actually all participating at the same time it's open, would be my first interpretation, but I know, I would, that's an excellent question, and one I'll get the answer to, but I wouldn't want to offer my opinion at this point.
I like what you're saying in terms of getting, it provides a vehicle for a lot of folks to get the information, and most of the questions I asked, you've got on there. You've got the data that I'm looking for. And I think other people may ask similar questions, and that data will also be posted, which I think is good. The last time I posed some questions that, you know, narrowing down, what is the question that we're asking? Okay? And I think as we start to get there, what's the next step that kind of focuses the question as to, is it, you know, what's the cost of, that we just asked Randy, $2.5 million to do that piece of it? But what's the cost to, if we look at that, one of the questions that's been up about making it a middle school, what's the cost of making it a middle school? And if we start, you're going to develop, I think, threads on this that are going to take you down various paths. Are we going to have threads here? You're going to be able to see how those have evolved. Are we going to try to come here during our meetings, which I think we said we're going to do on a regular basis, and kind of expand those threads, and try to come up with information that we would likewise put on that site?
Well, because of the fact that you are going to create the blog entries, and that since, when you create a blog entry, you're creating the thread.
Okay.
And the fact that we're going to allow them to respond just to that thread, they can't go and create a new blog entry, only you will have the ability to do that.
Okay. And is there a timeframe that you had in mind when you were talking to the mayor, in terms of how long this goes, what the next steps are as we kind of analyze the data that comes in on the blog, the questions, and so on? What's the timeline that was in your mind?
Well, when we were discussing it with the mayor and the Mayor's Advisory Council, it was, I mean, as long as it takes. I don't want to put too much of a time constraint on it. We do realize that it has to happen relatively quickly. But I don't want to walk in with, okay, in the next six weeks, we're going to make that determination. I want to make sure that, one, the communication is open and that it's clear, and, two, that we have it long enough so that the public is satisfied. And one of the things when we discuss, we discussed at the Mayor's Advisory Committee was that it has, the decision has to be factually based. And it has to, that, what that does is that provides continuation for boards down the road. If you base your information on facts, and on statistics, on hard evidence, it's more likely that future boards will go along with it. And it's less likely that future boards will reverse those decisions. And I think that's very important. It's also important for public trust that we base these things on facts. There's a tremendous amount of emotion surrounding Fermi, and that's the one snag to all of this. And it's something that we brought up at the Mayor's Advisory, or I brought up at the Mayor's Advisory Council. There are some that no matter how factual your argument is, they will not accept the factual argument. And that's the one stumbling block that I see. If you present the facts, and the facts, and they are what they are, and you base your decisions on those facts, and we as a board do that, I don't think we have a problem. But if, when it starts to become emotional, or it starts to become personal, that's when we start running into difficulties.
Tom, that's exactly what I brought up at the last meeting. We need to have this database, and we have to separate our own opinions and emotions from this. There are a lot of data in here about what we can and can't do. Some of that data is financial, what we as a town can afford to do to meet these needs. So I applaud you for that. I like the way it's going, but I'd like to see some points along the way that we kind of step back and say, where are we? And then, what's the next step? I'm not looking to put an endpoint on it without good discussion. But I think there should be some breakpoints in here where we assess where we are. And may, as Peter said, cause some more questions to come up. And I think that'd be the perfect time to do that.
But to address another one of Mr. Genius's points, is, as Dr. Schuman had brought up, just generally talking amongst board members, I think that a good idea would be to set up a temporary subcommittee. That temporary subcommittee be made up of equal, you know, bipartisan committees, so that we, and those that are interested, I mean, you can have the whole board be part of that committee. I just want it to be a fair process. I want it to be an open process. And I want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And that way, I mean, this is a public trust issue at this stage, and I don't want to lose the public trust over a miscommunication. And I think the more that we communicate with the public, the better we'll all be.
I agree. There's one final question. When you were bringing this up, you were talking about having it open to citizens, the board could participate. Would I assume correctly that we're also allowing the staff to contribute to this, or no?
Yeah, the blog site is open, it's not restricted, so anyone could participate.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe one of the things that we should go after first, rather than trying to collect a mountain of data on how we're going to go about using the building, is maybe if we can get ourselves and the public to identify how they want that building used. Do you want a vocational school in there? And if so, then you're only going after the data for that. If you want to make that a middle school, if that's what the public wants, then that's the data you chase, rather than trying to chase the data down for everything. See what, I would think the first thing we would want to get is, what is it that we want? What does the town want? It's like buying a car. You identify the car you want, and then you go out and do all your research there. So I would think that would be it. The logical way to go is, what does the public want to use the building for?
As a board, our first decision with regards to Fermi is, do we have an educational use for it or not? Before we decide what kind of car we're buying, or if we're buying a truck, we have to decide whether or not we even need one. And that's the first discussion, which is, I think, a significant amount of the information that we'll be seeking will address that first issue. And that's the most important issue that we as a board are elected to make a determination on. If we decide to keep the building, and keep it as an educational building, then that other conversation happens. But the very first conversation that we have, and the most important conversation before we decide anything, is, is there an educational purpose for it, and can we afford that educational purpose? Those are the two important questions. And that will be compared to all the other, you know, the other options that are on the table. I mean, us, we as a board have to make the determination, is if we maintain the building or we release it to the town? That's the first threshold, that's the permanent, that's what this temporary subcommittee's decision is. Do we maintain it as an educational facility, or do we release it to the town? That, after that, if it's to be used for something else, then that's a town decision. If it's to be used in an educational function, that's a board decision. And then we can continue that process. But the biggest decision that we have to make as a board is whether or not we keep the building.
Thanks, Guy. Good presentation. A lot of information for us to digest over the next few weeks. I'm all in favor of some community forum format where the public gets to see us and touch us. I think that's critical, not just on a computer. And I would recommend that we look at facilitating such community forum or forums over the next three to four months. Typically, suggest on a weekend, not a weekday, and possibly at Fermi High School. I'd also like to ask some questions, because I'm not sure if it's in the information that you've posted that we can read. I would like to know if there's a kind of description of the total square footage of the building, and how it's currently broken down into uses. How many square footage, square feet of classroom space, office administration, and I'll call it community space, because a gym, an auditorium, and other things are, to me, community space. I'm just curious if we have, if we can get that. And I'd also like to, and maybe it's in our budget, maybe it's not, current cost of heating and maintaining the building. And again, another bit of information that would be helpful to us, a list of non-academic or non-education uses of that facility in a 12-month period. For example, in the month of July, what is the building used for? And who's using it? That would all be helpful information for us to kind of digest. Thank you.
I personally think a good starting point, because it seems like what the fueling of what we're going to do with Fermi has to do with the fact that there's a strong population in Enfield that want to see it as a middle school. So I felt that when I got involved on the pre-ref committee, we just narrowed it down by the pros of using Fermi, and the pros of using JFK as a middle school, and the cons. And because of the soil issues and space issue, very quickly, it became apparent that Enfield High was the better choice. So maybe if we form a subcommittee, that could be their first charge. And if space with Fermi and expansion is going to be, have to happen with JFK, right there, you're kind of already up against what you were when you were toggling between Fermi and Enfield High because of soil issues and space issues. So I would, my personal opinion is, I think that is a good starting direction, and that actually may narrow it down very quickly. I felt like once we had those facts straight, as a pre-ref committee, we could get people on board more quickly, because the facts were the facts, rather than having like abstract ideas. Then if you decide Fermi can be used as a middle school, or something like that, or, you know, as an educational, it would make sense financially to keep Fermi as an educational purpose, then you could visit Peter's idea of the middle school, that type of thing. But that's just my two cents, so.
When you say "my idea of a middle school," I'd rather see a Volk ed.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. If you're gonna, if you're going to, if the facts show that, yes, Fermi over Enfield, over JFK, all the way, at that point, you know, you could look into your Volk ed, see if there's a possibility to have that in along with the middle schools, type of a thing, something like that.
Oh, once again, the reason I think it's a good idea to get the horse identified and put in front of the buggy here, is, you know, what does the general public want to use it for? And if you, if we were to go down the road of using, of creating a technical school over there, or a Volk ed school, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to use the entire building. There's just a portion of the building that would have to be used, as opposed to if you were to turn it over and make it into a middle school, then you'd probably have to use the entire building. You know, so what we're gonna, what road we're going to go down is open. And then again, you have, you know, you're having Stowe sit there. There's no reason that Stowe couldn't be turned into an alternative ed program, or an overflow for either Enfield High School or JFK Middle School to relieve some of the pressure. There's a lot of things you can do, but we've got to decide what we want to do.
Again, I'm going to refocus it. All of those conversations about the potential uses, academic uses, will fall under that rubric of, do we have an educational need or not? And that's what the board needs to decide, is, do we need the building, or do we turn the building over? Once we've reached that, we can have all the meetings you want as to what we're going to use it for. And I think that the information about the multiple ideas that I have heard, or we've all heard, for the use of that building will fall under that discussion. But the primary focus of the Board of Education is, do we keep the building, or do we release it? And if we do keep the building, then why are the reasons that we're keeping it? And that's where that conversation goes. What the town does with the building, I don't care. That's not our purve. What the comparison to, that's, yeah, that could be part of the discussion, and I understand that as well. But that's not our discussion. Our discussion is whether or not we have, we keep it as a school, or a school use purpose, and then after that, what we use it for. So all the other, our side of the equation, that's all our purve is. I mean, you can factor, you know, some of the uses that the town may have in mind into that. Or if we decide to release it, some of the things, the caveats to us releasing it, we can have that, too. But again, our decision is, do we keep the building or not?
Tom, just a question here, just playing devil's advocate. We could decide that we wanted to keep it as a school building, okay? This board could decide that, and let the town know that. But then, we can't decide on what the cost would, who would pay for the cost, or how much that cost would be, because, let's just say it's $2.5 million just to deal with that one piece, which may be higher than that. That's a town decision. And they may say, no, we can't afford that as a town. So I mean, I think, unless I misheard you, you had said, we have to decide, do we still want to use it? And I thought the second question was, can we afford it?
Right. That's a very major...
Those have to be linked together.
A major factor on that is, can we afford, can we afford it? I mean, and again, that's depending on, you want to compare it to anything you want to. That's a major, that's a major factual information, is what's this going to cost? Because regardless, even if it's $2.5 million, that's another referendum.
Right, you got it.
Question, is ADA compliance for opening the door and walking in the building, or ADA compliance for using it as an academic facility? So that's just a question.
Academic facility.
Well, is ADA compliance for using it as a public facility?
Different.
Different.
It's different.
Okay. Well, I just want to understand ADA. I was looking at some of the, researching some of the dates of construction, remodeling of the schools, and I did notice that in 2003, there was some work done at Fermi High School, according to our website. I'm not sure what it was, but it exists, and that would have meant, I'm not sure if that was, but I'd just be curious what that was. There was also, in 2001, some remodeling, reconstruction of the JFK Middle School. And I'd just be curious as to what those costs were, and did we bond, and are we obligated?
Those are the numbers that we asked for the last two weeks ago, and that's what they put, all those numbers and the amortization are all on that website that Guy just brought up.
Okay. Before we get any further into this, this is still the superintendent's action, we do have another item on here to continue this discussion. So I'm going, I'm going to suggest that at this time, we move into board audiences. If there are no audiences, then we can continue to... If there are no audiences, then we can continue to unfinished business.
May I take him?
Yeah. If you're not, you can speak after.
Hi, good evening. Lisa Rogers, Eight Winter Way. I have students graduated Fermi, that's at Fermi, and an eighth grader at JFK have come through the system from kindergarten. I...
You start from the beginning?
No. I come to you tonight as a graduate of the very first class of Parent Leadership Academy and the coordinator of the fifth, sixth, seventh, I'm sorry, no, the sixth, seventh, and eighth class and now the ninth class of the academy itself. I want to thank the Enfield Public School System for its support in this program as well as the state of Connecticut through its Educational Resource Center as well as the Parent Involvement Resource Center. I have, I'm happy to say that this is the first time I've ever written a full force grant and we received it. So $24,000 came to Enfield for this program as well as, and I'll introduce another program that was included within it a little bit later. The Parent Leadership Academy is a free 12-week course for parents to learn about their leadership styles, their abilities to bring skills forward that they already innately have but need to be enhanced. We teach effective agendas, moving along in a meeting, parent, public speaking, again, the skills of being a leader, what does it mean and what is your end result. We talk about networking. We talk about the Enfields government and how our particular location works. We have also tried to go to the state level within the last couple of classes because we see a need within that with our community. We're trying to get parents to be more involved in their community and to bring ideas for families and for children to be represented within their, their local communities. The 12 weeks, again, I said, are, are free to the parent. We come together for a retreat, which this year will be February 1st. We team build and then for the next 12 weeks are different courses. They come together and put all of their skills together and a community service project that they design. And usually it's a wonderful event. This past couple of years, we've actually, they've taught about money skills to teenagers and to middle schoolers this past year they felt was a great need. We did a recycling, helping the town to bring forward the recycling program was another project. Oh, the townwide tag sale was something that was started through the Parent Leadership Academy as well and that'll be running on its third year, fourth year this coming May.
Third.
Third year this coming May. I give you the information that will be going out to the students and to their parents. I also give to you a nomination form. If you come into contact with parents that you think would benefit from the program, if you would let us know and, and why, we could contact them and let them know that they have wonderful people thinking that they have wonderful skills that could be enhanced. Our graduates have gone on to, one of our first graduates was a major force in putting together the community rotary, community garden, which the produce then feeds the Enfield Food Shelf. Part of it was teaching children from seed to table, what food is all about and how to, how to, at this stage of the game, they actually cook it as well. We sit on boards within the town. We're in community service positions, very civically minded. We've had people running for council. We've had people thinking of running for Board of Education. We'll get there someday. We sit on the Enfield Food Shelf Board. We sat, have sat on the Enfield Resources for Children.
Kite.
We sit on kite as well, all of civically around children and of course, helping out in the schools. We want our, our parents to have a voice within the schools and educating children. One of our, our very public groups is the, I always say it wrong, Effie, Enfield Foundation for Excellence in Education. And it's a grant funding organization for outside the box thinking in education. And not only is that giving money back to the teachers and to instructors, instructors in town on different programs, but while they're raising the money, they're bringing the community together, whether it be Enfield Idol is one of their projects that they do. The Invention Convention has come into play again via the Effie, Effie group. Secondly, this particular grant, we wanted, as parents in town, we wanted to bring in our Spanish population. We were able to link up with people empowering people via the Yukon Extension and we have someone that's now trained and they will be teaching a Spanish people empowering people course. So if you have parents that are in that particular demographic that you feel are good leaders that could actually help bring people to feel more comfortable within our society, within our school systems, we would love to have that input as well. We'll take any questions you'd like. My email is on there and our deadline for application is the 24th of January and we start classes on February 1st. Mary Scott is here with me as well as support. She is the president of our Alumni Association, who is now going forward and putting a lot of these things into action. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Randy Dagel. I live at 6 Red Wing Road in Enfield, Connecticut. And I just came as a citizen just to talk to you a little bit about the use of the Fermi School as an education building. Being intimately involved in where we are in the consolidation of the two schools, there's a lot that has to be considered if you're keeping it an education facility. As Dr. Schuman said, as soon as you say it's going to be back to a education facility, the clock starts where it left off. And you had almost a little more than a year, I believe it was 14 months left to rectify all the previous code violations that y'all were cited for, for all those years. Secondly, you had not only the old ADA, now you have new ADA requirements throughout the entire building. Before, when the ADA's deficiencies were brought up to everybody's attention, it wasn't the entire building. It was specific areas due to the dates of construction, the usage and all that. Now every square foot will have to be required to be brought up to the ADA requirements and they are more stringent now. Plus you have all your, the code violations, the current and new with the new codes that are now in place. You have existing soil conditions that the requirements are even higher now. So if you do do any type of renovation over a certain percentage, you need to adhere to all of those requirements. It's not just like fixing a window. You're, you're going to be touching 80 to 90% of this building, so it's no longer going to be considered maintenance. It's going to be renovations and alterations, which puts you in a different classification. So you're going to have to bring everything up to the current. Just the need for new windows, I believe was over $1.8 million back then. The need for new roof, roof drains was 5.4 million. New mechanical system, that was in the, anywhere from the four to eight million, depending upon the usage that it's going to be used for. Also, the reimbursement rate, not only has it gone down, that school, because their maintenance items will not be eligible for them. So you would have less than 40% of the reimbursement rate available for that project. Like I said, once, once you, you guys say we're going to use it as an education building, either for Kennedy or middle school or whatever, is the clock, you don't have much time left on that TNT ignition that's going to be blowing up on us. So it's, it's, it goes down to the dollar for a lot of people. People would love to see it as a school, but then they're going to get this $52 million price tag that's going to be non-reimbursed, that may make their decision different. So I know you're saying, once you make your decision, we're going to go with that, but you almost have to move forward and move backwards. You're going to have to say if it's a school, it's this price tag. If it's going to be a rec center, it's this price tag. If it's gonna, because that's going to affect a lot of people's opinions. I know it will affect mine and I'm just saying. Tina knows this just as well as I do as far as the back data. She's a great source, so use her. So that's all. I just wanted to get the information out there that it's, it's a tough decision and that's one thing when we were being charged with the high school, we wanted nothing to do with that. It's, it's going to be a big fight and, and information and keeping it public and informed is crucial. No matter what you do, somebody's going to say, I didn't know. So good luck with all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else? Moving on. Unfinished business. Continue the discussion regarding the use of Enrico Fermi Building. Does anyone have any other comments? Ms. LaBak?
I'll just add, when we did a community conversation on the pre-ref committee, I have documentation and I'm glad Randy brought it up, that shows what the cost of Fermi was going to be and we went over the roof drains and the windows and stuff. So I will try to get that document to you guys so that Guy can put that as a link as well before the end of the week because it obviously is going to show you the comparison of Fermi versus Enfield High. And it was only done a year ago, so I can't imagine that those prices on Fermi are hu, have hugely changed. But then your work is half done at that point because at that point, you would only have to focus on stuff at JFK, so.
Mr. Neville?
I think one of the things we should maybe include in this discussion is talk to the town about some upcoming referendums or potential referendums that will be coming out. You know, we've talked, I think in the, in the mayor's group there about an additional roads project. We all know that the roofs, there's a roof referendum that is imminent in a couple of years. And I guess with all the roofs in town and the buildings, and I think we need to get that information out. And, and to me, it, it comes down to, unfortunately, it comes down to a lot of dollars, okay? And I, and I think although that's not directly related to Fermi, it's directly related to our ability to pay for any of these things and how much time we have to pay for them. So I'd just like to get that stuff out through the chair. Maybe you could get it through from the, the mayor and, and get that stuff out here. Thank you.
Again, one of the reasons that I, I suggest that we start a, a committee and, and start the process off is so that the information does get out to the public, so that the public does see that our, our decisions are factually based and not whimsically based. I think that's, that's probably a better way to put it in that way, so that they understand the process better. Again, if, if it turns out that it's an affordable idea and comparatively speaking, and it's going to cost us coin no matter how we do it, right, that's, that's something that we can, we can actually look at. How much in relation to the rest of the town? Because yes, I mean, we do have a responsibility as a board, but we also have a responsibility to the outside as well. But again, it's more, all of these things will be factored into, I hope all of these things are factored into our decision-making process. Any other comments?
I'd like us to keep separated. A couple of years ago, when we, when the debate raged on, are we going to have the new high school at Fermi or Enfield High School? A lot of the facts or, and information and data that was collected was what would it take to convert Fermi High School into the one high school? Not what it would take to keep the building open just as a school. There's a major, major difference there. In other words, is there a lot of this stuff that's being bantered about right now that wouldn't have to be done because it is a school right now? It's functioning as a school and it would still function as a school. We're not redoing the entire building. So I think we've got to keep some of that stuff separated.
Well, and I, I understand your comment that there's, there are some things that, that need to be kept in context, I think is the way that you're saying. However, I do know that it, standards have changed and they've become more stringent and they have become more strict. And regardless, it's still a school and schools are treatedly different, they're treated differently than any other public facility. And it's just the way it is. It's, that's what the state has determined and in many ways, the federal government has determined that that's the appropriate context. So do we want to keep our discussions specious? Yes. Do we want to keep our, our discussions in context with, with what's being discussed? Yes. But at the same time, remember, there are some variances between an elementary school and a high school, but the general statutes still reflect a school building and, and it's different than a general use public space. And that's something that needs to be kept in the back of everybody's mind. So when we make our educated, informed decision on this, on this matter, the public will understand why because those standards have changed significantly since we were first cited. And, and as, speaking from experience, having built schools for 15 years, I do know that the state, specifically states like Connecticut and Massachusetts are very micromanaging almost when it comes to school design. And it's just, it's a fact of life. It's neither good nor bad. It just is. Any other comments? Vinnie?
Oh. Peter, one of the things, you know, you're kind of right about, you know, it's not going to be the same price because you looked at it a different way. But don't forget, we would have to do that science wing all over again like we would have to anyways because the science wing is a mess at Fermi right now, isn't it? That's one of the reasons.
It's a bigger mess at Enfield High and they've been living with it quite a while.
Well, yeah. What I'm saying is that that's one of the things that we would have to look at if we did that, kept it as a school.
Done before and still, would still have to be done, yes.
Ms. LaBak?
I just wanted to add, and I don't know if this will help your question, Peter, but some of the things that Randy had spoken about and some of the stuff you're saying didn't have to be done, a lot of that stuff was based on the ADA in compliance and the code violations. And what, and just to bring, an analysis was done, just to bring Fermi up to code based on the present, if, if we were just going to go with Fermi, not even to expand it to be one high school, it was just to bring Fermi up to code. That analysis was done by the pre-ref committee.
So what I'm hearing then, without you saying it, is Fermi, which was built back in, what, 1972 or something?
Right.
Around that time period. And we have a lot of buildings much older than that, that I would assume are, are out of compliance now?
Maybe.
So I thought once a building was opened, you correct me, but when you build a building and it's under a certain type of code, that's okay until you start to make changes, correct?
Not, not in this case.
Not if they come and they visit and they do a site inspection and, and cite us for things.
I would guess that any building in the school in this state that's more than 25 years old is probably out of compliance then, so.
I, I think the difference in this case is that we have physically been cited and, and that changes the game.
For ADA.
For, for the school compliance issues for ADA. And once you are cited, that opens the door to further inspections in which you can be cited on. It's, it's kind of like being pulled over for a speeding ticket. The officer can write you a ticket if he chooses or he can issue you a warning. In this case, we were issued a ticket and we've managed to avoid, avoid going to pay that fine up to this point. But now if we should decide that we're going to continue to drive down that street, then we need to pay the fine and probably some interest costs.
Well, I'm just thinking back when at JFK, when we got cited for the elevators. We had to put two brand-new elevators in and then the one that we had was what, three or six inches too narrow? And we had to rip that out and put another one in?
We had three brand-new ones.
But that didn't open up the whole building to be gone over. I mean, we put in fire doors, but I think the whole town had to put in the fire doors.
At that time, that's probably what the, the code required or, and I'm almost positive you're talking about the other schools. When we did the renovations and the add-ons to the, the elementary schools, I believe the compliance for other issues were dealt with at that time also.
I don't know.
We, we actually did, Peter. We had to bring them up, a lot of things. We changed the, the door locks, the handles on the doors, making handicapped accessible. We changed, we put signs, we put Braille letters and, and we widened doors. We took out all the asbestos. We took out- asbestos, we took out, we just went up and down the line there. We had to put in blocking, uh, fire blocking up into the top, right up to the, the decking. Uh, so, there, there were a lot more things that went into that, that you actually probably didn't see them doing, but they had to do it as part of that, so.
One more thing. We have to be very careful, and I wanna say we spent an hour and a half on this wording on the pre-ref committee. Were we warned, or were we cited? Do you remember that meeting? Because there's two very different, um-
Legal interpretation?
Yes. Um, because that was a question, I believe, one high school was cited, one high school was warned.
Fermi was cited and it was warned.
Correct. So, that's another thing, um-
So.
Because as we get into these discussions, uh, we were kind of using the words interchangeably, and at one of the meetings, we were, um, saying, "No, we can't do that," you know, because it, they're two different, very different interpretations. Um, so, I just wanted to kinda put that out there, so.
Again, I think it's a good idea if we set up the committee. I think it's a good idea if we establish the website. I think it's a good idea that we start airing these issues in public, so that the public does understand when we make a decision. I, I don't want it to sound like we've already made up our minds on this. I, I personally haven't, so let's keep, let's keep the possibilities open without prejudicing anything. And, and again, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this at detail with the public, which is an important factor in that.
Agreed.
So, if, if there's barring any other conversation, moving on. Policy revision number 9133, standing committees and boards, second reading. Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You had your first reading at the November 26 meeting. This is a proposed policy change to add a policy standing committee to the board's existing standing committees. Um, the board may take action tonight if it chooses.
Any conversation?
I'll make a motion that we adopt.
Wait a second.
Second.
Open the floor discussion.
Yeah, I just wanna get down to the, um, there may be grammatical, just a couple of changes there. They're not substantive, but I just wanna fix them before we-
Very good. Now's the time to do it.
Present, present. Hold on a second. Okay. There's something in there, so.
It's where I'm looking, wishing I was like Peter, I had the paper copy in front of me, so I could find it.
Peter, that was a compliment.
Uh, just, I have it marked here.
Pass it down.
Actually, I had marked it and read on here. Uh, I believe we're talking about the, it's line 166. Oh, yeah, to the entire. I, I see what you're saying. It should be to the entire board for their consideration and adoption, right?
Yeah, yeah, if you just fix that.
Yep. There should also be an S.
Yes, committees.
On committees, as well.
Sorry.
Sorry, no, that's okay. I caught it, too. I knew there was something somewhere.
So, we gonna vote to approve this at this time? We can vote to approve this at this time?
You may.
With those-
With, as amended?
As amended, thank you.
Do we, do we need to, uh, make an official motion on it, or just-
The motion is made in second.
Motion is made in second, as amended.
As amended.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Genitis?
Uh, before we vote, uh, never mind.
No, no, if there's a question, now's the time to do it.
What exactly, which one are we voting on?
Policy.
The policy committee? To bring the policy basically back?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wauer?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to 9C, policy revision number 9368, order of business and board of education meeting conduct, second reading. Uh, Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this was, the first reading was conducted at your November 26 meeting. This is a, um, a policy change to move one item and add one item. You are moving board comments up in the agenda, and you are adding a second opportunity for the audience to address the board of education. Um, so you have had your first reading, you may, uh, continue your discussion, and you may take action tonight on, on this policy if you choose.
I move the question that we accept the second reading as the, uh, as, as the official policy.
Seconds?
Motion to, uh, accept?
Motion to accept.
No, we just, we just made the motion to accept, okay?
Okay.
No, is there any discussion?
Oh, is any discussion?
Yes.
I thought you moved the question. Moving the question means you ended the debate.
Sorry.
By having the audience have two places in the agenda to speak, I still feel very strongly that the board should have us, an opportunity to speak after the audience's second-time speaking. Without that, I can't be in favor of this.
I did check with, uh, council agendas, and they do also have a, a second opportunity. If, if the council so chooses to speak after that second audience participation, uh, they do it, they, it's there, but they don't, typically don't use it. Is there any objection to adding a second board member comments after audience?
I don't see, if we're not gonna use it, I, you know, I don't see the need to do it personally. That's just, I, I like the idea of the audience for the, for the public. I think that's what we're trying to do.
That's what we're, that's what I thought you were trying to do. Um, the board does have the ability at, at any time, and it's already there in our agenda. I mean, we can always add another line item to that. It's not, I mean, we can do it in process of meeting for, for certain, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a two-thirds vote, and it's, and it happens. I mean-
Responding to what, what Mr. Neville just said, if it's, if it's there and you choose not to use it, then don't use it. But if it's there on a particular topic that is a very hot topic, and in two years, something always comes up, it may never come up, it may never have to be used. But should something come up, and again, I'll keep going back to like the cathedral issue, which was extremely hot, or the graduation ceremonies, which was extremely hot. Um, if something like that comes up again, and you get 15, 20 people come down and speak for a second time, and there's something that we may clarify or whatever, I think we should have that opportunity there. It's just sitting there. If you choose not to use it, then don't use it, but it's still sitting there.
But the board can do that anytime now. They have, they have the right-
We have the right to do that.
We have the right to do that anytime we're not. If we, and if it's really used, why not just do it when we wanna do it? And I would be more than welcome, if we need to have another time, just, uh, suspend the rules and, and add that, add the item to the agenda.
I think it'd be a lot easier just to have it sit there.
All good points brought up, uh, in this discussion. The, the key here is we're giving the public more opportunity to speak. Whether or not the board members choose to speak multiple times is, is, uh, obviously, uh, something we can't, we're discussing and debating. But I think the clear point here is that the public needs the opportunity to speak. And I would, I would say, let's move forward, and if in fact that we find we need to formally add a second board comment, that we do so.
Any other comments? Ms. Zuliki?
Mr. Genitis?
No.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wauer?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
New business, action if any regarding ratifying the CSEA, CSEIU Local 760 paraprofessional employees contract. Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you were informed prior to tonight's meeting, the, um, local has ratified the contract, and now the board can, uh, pursue and, and take a vote on the ratification of the contract as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Move, uh, make a motion to accept the tentative agreement with the CSEA slash SEIU Local 760 paraprofessional employees contract.
Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Where's the contract? Weren't, shouldn't the board see it before voting? I, I'm, I'm thinking back to, uh, something Nancy Pelosi said about, "Well, vote for it, and then you'll learn what's in it." I know we had an, we had a discussion, but, uh, just unclear about procedure here. It would've been helpful to have the, the information in hand. Uh, I did review the old contract earlier today, but I had nothing other than our, an anecdotal discussion to, to compare it to.
Go ahead.
I wanna let Mr. Dreszek respond to that, 'cause he's been working with you on that.
Sure. As, as the board's aware, um, the, what you're agreeing is actually the tentative agreement. Uh, it's not the actual completed contractual document, it's the parameters for which the document would be drafted. Uh, and the board was made aware throughout the process of what the contents of the tentative agreement was. So, what was actually ratified by the union was a tentative agreement that's already been signed by both parties. Um, and the board entrusts us, in, in this particular case, myself, Mr. Ko should negotiate in behalf of the board, and then the, the union representations negotiate on behalf of them. Once we sign, uh, the tentative agreement with, obviously, the blessing of the board and, and the union leadership, then it's taken back to the entire membership for a vote on the tentative agreement, which in this case was what we would request the board to do. Once the board agree, or ratifies that tentative agreement, then we will get the finished document and contract, completed contract to the, to the board. We actually have to register that with the town clerk as well.
I have another question. Does the town council have to vote on this contract?
No, they do not. The town council only has to vote on certified contracts, which would be the teachers and the administrators. This is governed by MARA, not the Teacher Tenure Act.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Mr. Genitis?
Of all the contracts that we're involved in, I can truly honestly say, I wish this was one that we could've gotten more for you.
Any other comments or discussion? Ms. Zuliki?
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wauer?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Chairman Serard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Discussion and action if any regarding Buzz Robotics Club additional resource allocation. Dr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, the, um, board has been, uh, with the administration, talking with the liaisons from the Buzz Robotics program about the ways to continue and sustain that program, which has been involved, uh, in the district for over approximately 19 years. It's morphed in several different ways, um, as different members of the Enfield teaching staff and administration have been involved with the program. Uh, about a year or so ago, there was no one involved from the school system, and the board created a stipend so that there would be a Enfield Public Schools employee present when the program was being attended by our students. Unfortunately, um, for some reason, that, that really wasn't happening, and, and when we came to realize that, we began these discussions. Uh, Mr. Neville and I have met many times with them and attended some of their meetings. Um, and we will continue to work with Mr. Wauer and Mr. Neville and, and the Buzz folks to, to work through a lot of the things that need to be ironed out. But in the interim, what we did was we allowed the stipended person to get us through the fall, using the stipended time, so that the, the club could meet and prepare. They're getting ready to start their build season, which is extremely intensive. They meet, um, up to 60, 70 hours per week for a six-week period. The stipend that the board has approved for, will not allow for a person to be present for that amount of time. It would be, um, it'd be unrealistic for us to expect that under one stipend. We met with everyone involved, and the inside of our group, our employees and folks who are involved with this, as well as the people from the, uh, the Buzz Robotics Club. And we believe that in order to provide the appropriate supervision, we're going to need to ask the board to consider two additional stipend and advisors. You have created the stipend, the stipend is $2,300, and that pretty much covers the amount of time the person would have to put in for the fall semester. The two additional stipends would be split between the two new advisors, and they would make sure that they were there for the entire amount of time, especially the intensive build season, when sometimes they work for nine, 10 hours on a Saturday. Uh, the, the two advisors could split that time, they could work between them. So, if the board were to consider, um, allowing us to add two additional stipends, we believe that we will cover the supervision costs, uh, and the supervision responsibilities that the board has to keep the program running and, and sustain it through this particular build season and competition season.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the two stipend positions for the Buzz Robotics program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Up the Florida Conversation.
How much is the total of that? Is it just?
Approximately $4,700.
Okay, and that would carry, carry us through?
The entire second semester, competition and build.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Genitis?
You used the word supervision. We're, we're paying somebody this kind of money to supervise while they're working on this stuff?
They have, they're in fact supervising our students, and they are supervising the volunteers who are working with our students.
So, it's more than just being around and making sure the kids aren't acting up?
Well, that's exactly what it is, in addition to whatever other supervision and, uh, club responsibilities in terms of, uh, reserving the buildings and, you know, taking care of, um, permission slips, things along those lines.
And, and our medications, or, you know, act-
Correct.
It's probably akin to field trips, Peter, and to those, we'd have to have a certified staff legally, uh, there to represent us, but also to take care of the kids, um, during the time that they're, they're, they're involved in the activity.
So, altogether, then, we're looking at, what, six, $7,000 total?
Three stipends of approximately $2,300 each.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Wauer?
I've learned, uh, quite a bit in the past, uh, week or two about the intensity of this program, um, the, the level of, of, um, activity that has to occur in order to, to, uh, get to the final result of the program at the end of the year. And, uh, it's, it's interesting that, uh, we're, we're kind of moving in a direction where, you know, this program can become hopefully more integrated with what we're doing here in the schools, with our, 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 our school programs.
Well, Mr. Wauer stole my thunder. I, I was just gonna say the same thing. I mean, this is a, we've discussed this with regards to the new high school. We've discussed this as, as an important program for the actual application of some of the things that we are, are touting when we, when we talk about STEAM. Um, again, I think as a, as an item of good faith alone, while we're working with the Buzz Robotics people to integrate them more fully with the Department of, with our Board of Education, I think that this is a very good move. And I, as, as the chairman, I'm gonna do something very rare, and that's, I'm going to recommend to all of us, that we support this one initiative as, if, for nothing else, as an item of good faith with Buzz Robotics.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. I think we have a long-term commitment to these folks, and they've been very, very supportive of us and our kids for generations. My son was involved 15 years ago, when, when they were doing this stuff, and, uh, it made a, a big imprint on his life. But I think we also see the, the vision of where we're headed with the high school. We see a continued vision from the superintendent to bring this to the middle school level and to extend, expand it, because STEM and STEAM isn't just at the high school. It's a, it's a K-12 initiative. So, I think you're absolutely correct, and I applaud you for it. We, we need to support and show our commitment to them, what they've done so far, and where we're headed in the future.
Any other comments? Ms. Zuliki?
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wauer?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Chairman Serard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 10C, that would have to come after 16A, correct?
Correct. We may do it in executive session.
Why don't we, um, go to board committee reports? Do we have any reports from board committees? Crickets.
Joyce gave me one to give. No.
Item 13, approval of minutes, the regular minutes from November 26, 2013. Oh, oh, excuse me, board member comments. Sorry, I blew right past that. No, thanks for the catch. Item 12, board member comments. Um, where did we start last?
Excuse me, before we start, I thought we were gonna start whoever gave the pledge from now on.
Oh, yeah, um, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. Why don't we?
At our caucus, what we just, because it usually always starts at that end or this end, which I, I personally don't particularly care for. So, what I had brought up at our caucus was whoever gives the momentous moment and, and the little talk and says the pledge, that that's where it will always start and just work around clockwise.
All right. Mr. Genitis, you have the floor.
I have no comments tonight.
Okay. I just wanted to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and I hope our holidays are safe, and, um, I hope our- and I hope our kids and teachers and faculty all really enjoy their time off.
Mr. Well?
Just a couple of quick items. And I know we're going to put this on a future agenda, but I was able to attend the Daughters of the American Revolution Award presentation to the history teacher of the year, and we'll have that person here in January. Secondly, I was, I participated or attended for last Friday Henry Barnard's One Book, One School fundraiser here in town, and again, it was a fascinating evening, attended by many, many students and their families. And students were given an opportunity to read in front of others, and there's also a reading of the Polar Express by one of the teachers, and it was, it was pretty fun. And again, hopefully, I'm going to just mention that I had, I've had a conversation with our, our library director informally about looking at opportunities down the road in the coming months to get them to be able to tape some of the school events that happened during the day, so that parents who are not able to attend can then see their children on ETV in the evening or the weekends. But I know he's currently searching for a station manager, so we're kind of on hold until that process completes itself. Thank you.
Mr. Grady?
First, I'd like to thank the group of students who came out here tonight and given us an update or told us about the ride for Nico. It was a really a great thing that the students put together and, and pulled off for, and raising that money for that. I'm sure it was a really tough thing to do for, for that. I commend the kids and I commend the school for allowing it to happen. It was, it was a really nice thing for them to do. I also like to thank Mr. O'Brien for coming out here and giving us an update on the ETLA. I mean, it's a program that a lot of us don't know about. It's a very good program, and recognizing some people that help support that program. And also, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Well, I have a few things. I would like to mention a student at Eli Whitney School, Owen Kennedy. He is a fourth grade student. He sponsored an event at Bounce Town in South Windsor called Bounce Out Hunger, and students and their families could go, and the, the cost was $10 to get in, and $5 went to the food shelf, and they also asked for each family to bring non-perishable food items to be donated to the food shelf for the holiday season, which I thought was fabulous. I would love to maybe possibly have Owen come in and maybe tell us about his adventure and how he got started on that idea, maybe after the first of the year. The Enfield High Girls Basketball, I'm sorry, you already said, they have their first game tomorrow at Bacon Academy in Colchester, and then they have another game this Friday at Ellington. That's exciting. This weekend, the Shaker Pines Fire Department went around their neighborhoods with their trucks decorated and Santa on the truck, and they came by your house and residents left items for the food shelf out, and in return, residents got free smoke detectors. And Santa was there, and there was music playing, and the trucks were festive, and it was great to see. I'd also like to mention, there is a bookstore on 76 Palumbia Drive, and the name of the bookstore is called Tell Me a Story, and they are offering discounts right now for the Board of Ed, Town Council, military, veterans, and senior citizens, 15% off, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays between now and Christmas. The Fermi Safe Grad had their auction, and they didn't have a final total yet of how well they did last Friday night, so as soon as I get that, I can report that. There is also, I know how we all feel about Facebook, but there is a new page, it's called Caught in the Act in Enfield, and you have this opportunity to go out there and post anybody you feel is caught in the act doing something positive for the town or the schools. The Shaker Pines Fire Department was put out there. Owen Kennedy was put out there, and I think that's really good, because Enfield is a positive town and has positive attributes, because that's why we're all here, because we believe in the town. And lastly, the presentation that the boys did about what they had done for Nico Filippa, I just have to say, some of those boys I have known since preschool age, and to see them come up here, and this past summer, they spent a lot of time riding their bikes, and as parents, it was very hard to let them go, but that's really what 12-year-old boys should be doing, right, in the summer? Riding bikes, not sitting home, playing video games. And the helmet issue was quite a bone of contention, and this was a big learning experience for them, and I'm so proud of them. But what really struck me is what Karina Filippa said about, we're all adults, drive safely, don't drive impaired, just pay attention to the road. And one of the things we explained to the boys after this incident, letting them go again on their bikes for the first time, was you can't always take into consideration that the drivers are paying attention. So my promise to Karina is to always make sure I'm driving carefully and looking out for those bike riders, and I wish everybody a safe, healthy, and happy holiday.
Mr. Neville?
Just a couple of things. Most of the comments tonight from the folks that came here, you know, I could echo the comments of, of my colleagues here, but I think it came under the, the heading of, we have wonderful kids here, okay? And we forget sometimes, we get involved in some of our discussions here, forget that we're here for the kids, and we forget about the good things that go on every day, and we don't know anything about them unless we kind of find out through this thing here. The lap for Nico was just great, and we brought it up before, you know, I took the opportunity to go out and walk with the kids, and, and it was wonderful, and it, I, his parents were there, it was, it was just a heartwarming thing that these kids stood up and, and came up with this creative idea themselves and just made it happen, and wanted to make it an annual thing to make some, some difference out of, out of this, this tragedy. I was just totally impressed. But it's one more thing in terms of our ETLA. We have all these volunteers in this community that do it year after year. They just give and give, they don't want anything. In fact, if you try to give them some attention, recognition, they don't want it. They do it just because they want to do it, and they want to give back on it. We have those kinds of things going on, and I applaud those folks. We have no idea how many other people do that in this, in this community, and, and I think it speaks highly of our community and, and of our kids. We talked to the high school, we talked about the penny wars, which can be really kind of crazy at times, having been involved in them, but also the canned drives and the turkey drives and the things that we don't know anything about. You know, I've been down the food shelf, loaves and fishes and so on. All kinds of stuff comes from our kids and their families, and it goes on all the time. They're unsung heroes as far as I'm concerned, and that's what it's all about. And I just like to say congrats to all of the, thank you for what you do, and, and I think we have a wonderful kids, and we have a wonderful community, and I just don't want to forget that during this holiday season, and I wish you all a wonderful holiday.
Ms. Thurston?
First off, next meeting, can we turn the heat on? Because I'm really cold.
Actually, it is, it is pretty cold. Uh, yeah.
Last, last Wednesday. Oh, Lord. All right, last Wednesday, I attended the Eli Whitney Fifth Grade Concert, Chorus Concert. They did a great job, full house, grandparents, parents. So proud of the kids, they did a great job. And along with what everybody is saying about the children who did, who did the lap for Nico, you know what? I have to say kudos to the parents for raising such good kids, because to have 12-year-olds to go out there and come up with this, and Tina, I know you're going to cry on me, but I know your son was out there, you should be so proud of him. All the parents should be. Thank you.
Kudos to all of the comments about the, we have a good town. We have good people and are a good town, and, and as I said earlier, there are certain moments where you're just really, really proud, and, and I have to say that, I was really, really proud to say that I came from Enfield. I did participate in the torchlight parade. It was absolutely fabulous this year. It's one of my favorite parades. We did light the tree, and we got to sing Christmas carols, and it was, it was a very fun event. We had a pretty good turnout this year, and I got to commend our high schools for doing a wonderful job. Again, the kids did great. The corral was, was very nice, and, and it was just an excellent event. And in all of the best intentions, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. So, moving on, approval of the minutes, the regular minutes for November 26, 2013.
Motion to accept.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh. Show of hands, do we approve the minutes? Approval of accounts and payroll, we have nothing. Correspondence and communications, nothing. We have a matter that requires an executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? All opposed, we're in executive session.